All right. Good evening, one and all. Let me call to order the regular city council meeting for the City of St. Helena for December 12, 2017, and would the Vice Mayor lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have an acting city clerk. Roll call.
Mayor Gilbreath.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Councilmember Ellsworth.
Here.
Councilmember Coburnstein.
Here.
All right. Beginning at 4:00 PM this afternoon, we met in closed session. We have no reportable actions with respect to 4.1, 4.3, and 4.4. And with respect to 4.2, council has directed staff to look at our standard condition of approval relating to legal indemnification and potential incentives and support for housing in our community. That would take us to public comment. Public comment's limited to three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public comment? Yes, please.
My name is Glenn Smith, 1730 Dean York Lane, and I just want to thank the council and the administration for one of the items on the consent agenda, that is, the contract between the city and our Napa Master Gardeners for the Pollinator Garden behind the library. I'm the coordinator of that project, and I just look forward to a long and productive relationship in managing that garden and making it a site for community education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
John Milliken, 1276 Hudson Avenue. There's an item on our consent agenda that we want pulled tonight. Some people want to talk about it. In the course of talking to Noah last Friday about that item, it occurred to me that we're working off a 25-year-old general plan these days, and the item that we're going to be discussing was, application was 2010. And there's huge planning things going on here, and until the general plan gets updated, and we really can't make good decisions. Current staff has to work with a really outdated document, and maybe a New Year's resolution for the council should be not to do anything until that is done. I mean, it's really getting to the point of being ridiculous. Working on a document that was probably drafted in 1990, environmental standards were different. A lot of things were different back then. But that is our current working document, and that's the document that we're going to be using for this new EIR that's coming up in this thing. So my public comment is, I think some more attention and some more urgency should be spent on getting the new general plan updated.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Milliken. Further public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Wait, we've got one. One more.
I wasn't planning on talking about this. Chuck Vonder, 1176 Starr. I know a year, two, three years back, we had a noise ordinance for leaf blowers. I guess my comment is, I don't think we're enforcing it. I work out of my home office, and it just drives me absolutely crazy. I sympathize with gardeners. They should be paid more if they have to rake, but are we enforcing any of that? Or have we ever? Or is there actually an ordinance? Maybe I missed something.
Well, there is an ordinance, and like any code enforcement, it's complaint-driven, as I understand. Is that right, Mr. House?
That would be the mechanism for staff to be aware of noise violations.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Any further public comment? Okay. Reports by...
I'm Wendell Laidly at 706 Hunt Avenue. I distributed to the five of you an email that I just sent you a half an hour ago. I'm sorry it was so late, but I'd like to read just the written content. It contains a bunch of graphics as well. I'm here to object to the very consideration of any new EIR for developer Hunter's development application to build housing on his property located in the Napa River floodplain now behind our...
Mr. Laidly, we're going to be getting to, that's on our consent calendar. It's obvious that it's going to come off the consent calendar, and so your comments with respect to that would be more relevant when we get to, would be directly relevant, I think, when we get to item 7.6 on our agenda.
Perfect.
And I'll call you back.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further public comment? All right. Reports by staff, city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Let me start with the city manager.
Just a brief update on the SHAPE Committee. They've been meeting on Wednesdays at 6:30 in this room and have another meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 here.
All right. Ms. Smiths?
Thank you. I'll give a quick update on our annual audited financials. We are expected to get our annual audited financials by this Friday. We'll then be working on the management discussion and analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. And so we are on track to have those done by December 31, and we're planning on presenting the final bound version to city council and to the public on January 23.
Okay. The city clerk?
I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. House?
I'd just like to let the public know that the mayor, the vice mayor, myself, and the Chair of the Planning Commissioner conducted interviews for the consultants who responded to the general plan, EIR, RFP. Just to let Mr. Milliken know, we are, and the rest of the public in the council, know that we are intending to move forward with selection of that consultant this week, with the contract potentially scheduled to come before the council on January 9. So just a heads up that we are pushing forward with the EIR for the general plan.
All right. Yes, Ms. Smiths?
Good evening. I'd like to give a quick update about the Pacific Gas and Electric. There was a lot of, we got some residential complaints about a lot of traffic on Crane and Valley View, and is PG&E doing some transmission line and substation work on their main distribution lines that go from Sonoma County through to Grayson? The work was interrupted when the fires began in October, so they're back on schedule. Press release will be sent out, as was sent this evening, to council notification, and then they'll be going out to Jesse Duarte, the Sunny Little Star and Mail Chimp. So if you're in, there'll be heavy equipment, large bucket trucks, and there will be helicopter work. That's some of the ways they raise and lower the new overhead distribution lines. So just wanted to make the local residents aware of that work that's going on. Hopefully, the large trucks, the heavy trucks bringing in some of their base rock to store some of their reels, the big heavy lines of reels, will dissipate, and then when they go to remove the extra materials in their base camp, there will be those trucks again, but that'll be later this spring. In addition, I would like to introduce our new utility operations manager, Felix Fernandez III, to give an update on our water taste and odor issues that have continued.
Oh, absolutely.
So with that, I'll let him speak on that some more.
Okay. Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as you know, we have received multiple complaints, taste and odor complaints, water quality complaints to the Water, City of St. Helena. And what staff have done is, we've identified additional treatment, powdered activated carbon. It's commonly used in the water treatment field. We would introduce that ahead of the filtration process. It then carries through the treatment train into the filters where it removes taste and odor. It is NSF 61 approved, USA EPA approved, and state water board approved, so it's very commonly used for taste and odor concerns. And we've done some initial bench testing, some bench top testing with this product. We've identified a few products, but one in particular, it removes the taste and odors. So we're going to be implementing that in the next couple of weeks. We anticipate having better water quality in probably four to six weeks from now. That's the update. Any questions? I do anticipate, what is activated carbon? So just answer that right now. Activated carbon. So the activated carbon essentially is just, it through a process of chemical, physical means, it takes carbon, it takes, the process takes all the organic material out of it. What's left over is very microscopic pores, and it increases the surface area. It works through adsorption, so it's not, it's, all those molecules, taste and odor molecules, will adhere to the surface. So that increased surface area is what allows it to be so effective. And that's my update. Any questions?
All right.
I've got a question or a thought. A lot of people have come to me in the last couple of weeks talking about the water issue, the taste and quality, and the press release has gone out that assures everybody it's safe, even though the taste and odor are off. But one of the things that has come up is people are interested in testing the water at their faucets, as well as knowing that you're testing it at the source. Is there a way that there can be a coordinated, if somebody, my thought was that if somebody is going to go get it tested anyway, can the city direct them where to get it tested so that it's consistent, the data's kept in one consistent place?
They could test it. If they contact me, I can let them know where they can go. But what we plan on doing as staff is, we do have it diagrammed on the city map of where the complaints have come from. And so what we intend on doing is going and getting some benchmarks. We'll get some benchmarks out in the community. We'll test them in-house at our lab, and then compare it to the raw water that's coming in.
Great.
Once we add the additional treatment, then we'll continue to do benchmarks to make sure that it's working out in the field.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any further questions? Good. Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Coburnstein? Mr. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I have one thing. One of the things that's come out of the SHAPE Committee meeting so far is the, and we've been, we've known about this for a while, is sort of the condition of some of the city buildings, particularly looking at the city hall and the police department, and some maintenance needs at the fire department. And my thought was that a lot of communities do community fundraising for projects, you know, whether it's a public pool, or it's a museum, or, and the public is all sort of invited to participate, and sometimes they have a thermometer, you know, they put outside. It's sort of a hokey, old-fashioned way to do it, but it's actually so popular, there's websites where you can get these types of thermometers. It's just an idea that if we start to look at, we know we're going to need to do this, we know we're going to need to move forward in some way, it may be a way to show staff and police and fire that we're motivated as a community to work together to get these needs dealt with. I've got a couple of examples. Palo Alto's doing a fundraiser for a museum. They're trying to raise 20 million, so that's a huge one. There's a small one in Ohio that's trying to raise 60,000, so that's a modest one. There's one in Ellsworth, Maine, and it says, "Ellsworth, halfway to 1.2 million fundraising goal for new city park." So there's all different levels of this kind of community fundraising all over the country. So it's a fairly common thing that seems to get all different levels. In just a little local research, the Calistoga Pool, a few years ago, raised 1.5 million. The Performing Arts Center right over here was between 1.5 and 2.5 million, depending on how you looked at it. And the skate park here was, a lot of the funds came from community fundraising. So I had a thought that maybe in the spring, we think about some kind of fundraising event to get something started. Maybe one of the empty buildings downtown can host an event, and we can start what would be an ongoing, you know, fundraising thing, and see how we did by the end of the summer or something, just to demonstrate the motivation as a community to work together to support having the facilities that staff, police, fire, everybody should have. So that's a thought.
All right. Thank you. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Smiths?
I've got one announcement. The NVTA has gone live with their app for our shuttle, and actually, it's all the shuttles in the cities. So you can download this app. It's called Ride the Vine, and it's pretty similar to the Uber app. So once you're, once you've registered with it, then you, it's pretty simple to pick a location where you're going to get picked up, and then where you're going to get dropped off, and you can actually watch live the shuttle as it's going around town. And I wrote it last week, and I was wondering, why was it going away from me? But it finally did get to me, and it works really well. So I put some flyers on the back table back there if anybody's interested in learning how to do it. So, thanks.
Okay. I have nothing, except that I hope the community takes old time and enjoys the holiday season downtown and our Christmas decorations as well. So, looks nice.
Okay. That takes us to the consent items. Staff has pulled 7.1. 7.2 is consideration of proposed approval resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Regents of the University of California and the City of St. Helena for the Pollinator Garden located at 1492 Library Lane. 7.3 is consideration approval of minutes as delineated therein. 7.4 is consideration and a proposed approval of a resolution, rescinding resolution number 2016-122 and adopting investment policy P-F-I-0002, 2017, for the City of St. Helena. 7.4, 7.5, excuse me, consideration proposed approval resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Beehive Industries LLC for asset management software implementation and licensing for a four-year term in amount not to exceed $92,160. 7.6 relating to Hunter is pulled. And 7.7 is a consideration and a proposed approval resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Cosmont Companies for real estate and municipal financial advisory services in amount not to exceed $45,000, and two, authorizing a fiscal year 2017-18 budget increase of $45,000 to 101-4300-2130 to be taken from general fund reserves. So is there a motion to approve the items that I listed on the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Second.
City clerk? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What was the last one you read? I was just a little confused when I was...
7.7 is dealt with a contract with Cosmont Companies.
We have an updated agenda.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellsworth, if you could give me your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbreath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
All right. That gets us back to 7.1, and I think that's Ms. Smiths'.
Thank you. This item was pulled because there was originally, it include the approval of the final map for Sulfur Springs subdivision parcel, and request authorization of the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement sewer reimbursement agreement and a deferred improvement agreement. It came to light last week that the sewer main reimbursement agreement needs to go through public hearings, so we're wishing to pull this item and to remove that portion of the final map approval process and allow the rest of the project to go forward as a resolution approving the final map for Sulfur Springs subdivision parcel map and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement and deferred improvement agreement. This parcel map has been in the process since 2005, and has been extended several times, and with the last extension in January of 2016. The applicant is attorney representative is here tonight, and I'm willing to speak on the project if you'd like, or we can move forward. They have provided on the dais here tonight and for the public that they're in agreement to move forward the final map at this time and come back at a future time for a public hearing on the sewer main reimbursement agreement, and with the acknowledgement that even if the sewer main agreement, we don't come to approval with the city council, that they still know, they still need to put that sewer main in along Sulfur Springs Avenue.
All right. Is there any public comment at this point? All right. I'll close the public comment. Any council discussion? Then I would entertain a motion to approve item 7.1 with the sewer reimbursement agreement deleted from consideration of that item.
Still moved.
Second.
Wow, that was good. The second became the first.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbreath?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Coburnstein?
Yes.
Okay. That then takes us to 7.1.
Just a clarification on this reimbursement agreement. When you say it has to go to a public hearing, does that suggest that there will be a notice to the neighbors who would be affected by the reimbursement agreement?
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, you may want to check into this, but I didn't see a methodology of how we ascertain the amount of money, so I don't know if that's an issue that's been presented to you, but I noticed that. So we need to check into that.
That will be in the staff report, and the findings are brought to council on the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. So that takes us to 7.6, which is the approval of the environmental agreement with DUDAC for the Hunter subdivision project. And Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and the community. As identified, this resolution would authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with DUDAC to complete the Hunter residential subdivision environmental impact report for a total not to exceed $234,000 and some change. The staff report includes a brief background of some of the steps and process that were undertaken to get us to this point. I'm just going to briefly present some highlights of the staff report and then be available for any questions. Brian Gradage is here representing DUDAC. He's happy to answer any questions as well. But essentially, as the council of the community is well aware, staff previously brought a request for direction from the council to issue a new RFP for the Hunter residential subdivision, given the, essentially, the amount of time that was, that's surpassed since the draft document was done, and the fact that the previous consultants resigned from working on the project. Staff did issue an RFP, and we received three responses, and the top two respondents were interviewed by a panel which consisted of city staff and the planning directors of Yountville and Calistoga. DUDAC was a unanimous choice out of that process. Their scope of work is attached to the staff report and the contract. It is, they are proposing to draft a completely new EIR and start the process over. It will be a new notice of preparation, which is kind of the signal to the state and the community that this is a new EIR process in its entirety. The current scope of the proposal does identify incorporating some of the past information that was gathered as a part of the Hunter previous work on the subdivision, but it will be a completely new document and analysis. The contract also incorporates several contingency options, and that was intentionally done by staff to eliminate the need for any new contracts, to try to get in front of some of the issues that the project previously dealt with with regards to essentially a little bit of cost overrun that wasn't anticipated in the contract that was approved. It's also worth noting that all the costs for the preparation of the EIR will be covered by the applicant, with the exception of the staff time taken to manage that process. So with that, that essentially is the highlights of the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, or respond to any of the comments that may come from the community. And as I mentioned, Mr. Gradage is here too, and can supplement any information I don't have.
I had one quick question about the title here. It says, "Including contingencies." Should that be excluding contingencies?
So we included the contingency elements that were identified in their original scope of work. In case the process needed to get to a final EIR required some additional work to be done, we wanted all that work to be captured in one contract. In case it did get triggered, we wouldn't have to come back to council and essentially give an opener, which is what happened with the last consultant who then resigned when the contract was opened.
It may be my very close reading of this, but it says, $234,511, including contingencies, but if there are contingencies that are needed, that's going to add to the price of $234,000.
The original scope of work was identified as about $203,000, and then those contingencies added that additional cost.
To get to the $234,000.
That's correct.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, it could be less, but we wanted to include the total amount in the contract.
All right.
I just wanted to inquire about one thing that you said, because it seems to be in conflict, and your explanation might be helpful. You said it's going to be a completely new EIR, but yet it's going to incorporate past information. So to me, that seems like a conflict of concepts, and maybe you can explain what the intent is behind that.
Sure. I will do my best, and Mr. Gradage can supplement if I don't satisfy the answer, but essentially, there was a lot of past analysis that was done on the site, and speaking with Mr. Milliken, because he raised the same concerns when I met with him on Friday, a soils report is a good example. So if there are core samples taken with regards to the site to ascertain what the soil constitute was, that data is still valid, because obviously, the soil conditions haven't changed. The analysis, however, of that data would obviously need to be updated to include the results of the Napa quake, for example, or those types of things, the North Napa Fault quake. So the intention is to rely on the available data where it's still relevant and adequate, but obviously, the analysis portion on that data will be updated and redone.
And then the other concern that I had is, will there be analysis taking into consideration the fact that the Pratt Street Bridge is closed? Will that be incorporated? Obviously, that's updated information. It's kind of interesting, because, you know, if you're testing during that period of time, are you capturing what it's like when it is open? So I'm sure there are ways of doing that. I assume that that has been thought about and addressed in this, in the scope of this work?
So that's an excellent point that I believe has been raised by some community members as well. The project, in the scope, it does propose to conduct new traffic counts, new traffic study, air quality analysis, noise analysis, greenhouse gas analysis, and energy consumption. So those are some of the areas that it will be completely new data collection. How the traffic engineer is going to model the fact that the Pratt Street Bridge is closed, I can't answer that question, and I wouldn't ask Mr. Gradage to answer that question either, because we don't have our traffic engineer in the room. Obviously, that is a complicating factor that will need to be brought into the traffic modeling, but definitely, new counts will be done that will take into consideration existing baseline, as well as some interpretations of the data and some assumptions in order to make the model accurate.
Thank you. Is there an estimate of staff time that would be taken to manage it?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I would say almost each EIR is different, because each project is different. I do anticipate a significant amount of staff time with this project, just because of the amount of interest that's been involved in the community with the project, and the amount of past work that's responsibility of the staff to provide to the consultants. There's boxes of files, frankly, on the Hunter subdivision project at City Hall. So this one may be a little bit more staff-intensive than an average subdivision would be, but I can't quantify that.
All right. Any further initial questions? Any public comment with respect to it? Yes, Mr. Milliken?
First of all, I did have a great conversation with Noah on Friday, for about an hour, and we went over a lot of stuff. Don't get me wrong, I am completely in agreement with redoing this EIR, but I have some significant troubles with how it started out and how it's developing so far, and I kind of see some things repeating themselves from the first EIR that I would like to set off. And I think if there's a lot more preparation done, a lot more information shared, a lot more community input into the design and scope of this EIR, it'll head off a lot of problems that will stop this EIR from maybe landing up in the same place as the previous one. And back in July, at city council meeting, we talked about redoing the EIR, and everybody was in, pretty much in agreement that we were going to redo it. We even talked about having the applicant reapply, and that was going to be checked into. And then it was said, oh, well, when the new city manager gets here, that'll be one of his first things, to start thrashing out what we're going to do about this debacle of an EIR. And so I've been scouring the agendas ever since that day, you know, looking when this is going to come up. And I realized that this today on the consent is just for this concerning the scope of activities and the contract with DUDAC. I'm not here to beat up on DUDAC. I'm not here to beat up on DUDAC and say I didn't like what they did, but I, you know, that the fact that the requests for proposals, well, first of all, we got turned down the 10 days after by three firms, and then the requests for proposals went out in September or so, and I didn't know about that. I don't think anybody, not many people in here knew about that. And I just think it would have been really good to involve the public in shaping these requests. That is, because the first EIR missed so many things in limited scope to, mainly to the project site and not all the, the ripples of the pond of this big rock being thrown in to the middle of our town going out. I really think that it's a little premature to send out RFPs for this new EIR without having a lot more input from the public. And then secondly, also consider having the applicant greatly upgrade their 2010 application for this to provide a lot more information so that the EIR can get done correctly the first time, and we don't have to go through another six-year process like we did before. The history of the applicant has been to withhold payment, has been to add on information as time goes on, and I really don't know what the, the informational aspect of preparing for the EIR is right now because it's just been a moving target. And the last time the public has had a chance to actually weigh in on the scope and what is being discussed and what is being reviewed in the EIR was 2012 with public comment. And it took them 13 months to come back with, 13 months to come back with those comments and what they were going to do, and they didn't change anything. Even a 192-page brief prepared by some lawyers, an environmental firm down, down in San Francisco. So without taking too much more time, and you're going to hear some things from some other people today, I really think we have to take a step back and get a much better feel for what the public wants, what the public deserves, to get a, a really well-done sequel report that identifies all the mitigations, all the impacts and the mitigations that need to be, happen for this project to work for this community if it's ever going to get done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, the, the cultivator garden should be included in the EIR because it's going to be your neighbor, okay? Thank you.
All right, further public comment?
Chuck Vonder, 1176 Star Avenue. I was up here speaking 2012, whenever it was, when we last had conversation on this, and I guess my concern would be, and I, I write a lot of reports myself, if, if you take data and peer review that data and, and make assumptions based upon someone else's data, you're at risk. You're at risk of relying on data that's not accurate, that's not true. I think that's going to put a cloud on an EIR, so when I hear that, you know, I, I can certainly see some things, like the sun is going to follow this trajectory. Well, probably that's not going to change much in five years, but the soil maybe has changed. Traffic for sure. We didn't know that we may be putting a hotel on Adams Street. We didn't know that we're going to have two new eight-plex potential residential complexes on McCorkle. All that traffic's going to funnel down Pope Street. We didn't know that Castellucci bought land and plans to build, so I guess I want to make sure that the traffic analysis was very poorly done the first time around. I think they picked the rainy day in Tuesday in, you know, April or something, which isn't indicative of what traffic is like in Santa Helena. I think it, I think it needs to be bigger. The water part of it was preposterous, how they imagined water from dry wells somehow and toilets flushing and saving all this money. It was, it was honestly laughable. So if I were, and I'm a consultant, I write these reports, I would never even think about using someone else's data as the foundation of my report. I think it's opening up to potential lawsuits. Our attorneys have been in touch throughout this process, who I think did a phenomenal job of blowing a lot of holes in the original EIR, and anything that's not done from scratch, I think is going to automatically trigger concern along those fronts. So I think the city is doing itself a, an injustice if it doesn't very carefully decide what absolutely makes logical sense to use, and certainly some data is, but anything that's even close to potential for change. And I think soil can change. I, I know water changes, I'm tasting it, you know, right now. Our climate has changed, so many things that character of our, our community. So I'd be very leery about using anything that even has a hint of a possibility that there could be a change to it. You're opening yourself up to someone contesting someone else's work. And if I were DUDAC, I would not want to do that. Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Good evening, I'm Vicki Bradshaw, and I live at 708 Hunt Avenue in St. Helena. I have concerns, not that a new EIR is done, but that any information coming out of the old EIR is going to be transported into the new one. First of all, this EIR process has been going on for eight years, and there's virtually nothing that probably remained the same in its entirety during that eight-year process. And so to recycle that information, including anything from the initial study into the new EIR, does jeopardize that, that new process. So I think the initial study needs to be redone as well as everything else. Secondly, the developer was the one who pulled the original EIR when it was up for a vote at the city council just prior to the vote being taken. It was that decision that started all the delays. It was not any decision by the city. It was the developer who pulled the original EIR from being voted on by the city council. So I, I'm not sure that he can blame the city for creating the delays, when in fact it was his decision to do that. And after eight years, we expect to have some staff changes, which we did have, and so I don't think he can use that as a reason for, for the delay. And I think if you look at the itemization of the reasons for the delay, excluding the staff changes, were all his responsibility. The deficiencies in the original EIR should definitely not be carried forward into the new EIR, and there are many deficiencies, far too many to name in, in just three minutes. We should do it right this time so we don't have to redo it again in the future. Everyone deserves some finality in this process. Eight years is way too long to have an issue drag on, and probably the people that need to have some finality in this process most is the staff. If you're having boxes of documents that recycle themselves, it's probably not the best position to be in. In conclusion, perhaps I agree with, with John. I think the city should get a group of people who have been involved in this process, residents who have been in this process, who are really knowledgeable, and have them work with the city, the city staff, to come up with what should be the criteria to be in the EIR. The assumption in the contract is though some of those decisions have already been made, and I think the residents, particularly those who have been involved in it for at least eight years, would have a lot of relevant impact and a lot of relevant input. So I thank you for your consideration, and I think that any public review is probably going to benefit the program as opposed to adding time to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Good evening, Anne Navarro. Thank you as always for your service, for this very difficult job for all of you. I just wanted to, you know, as people speak, some of your questions are answered here, so I'm going to bounce around a little bit. I hope I sound a little bit coherent up here. But after reading the Hunter EIR item, I have some questions and some clarification would be appreciated. In the July city council meeting, this item was brought to you because the developer decided to pick up with the seven-year project again. And through the five-year EIR process thus far, the developers pulled the final EIR document from the planning commission meeting before the vote was taken, failed to provide some of the additional information requested by staff, did not provide the council with an area, an answer from the county on the Pope Street light issue, and delayed decisions on additional funding throughout this time. The project continuation was further complicated by the announcement from the EIR firm that has been involved since 2011 that they were no longer going to work on it. So in that July meeting, the planning department proposed that it be offered to three very reliable, pre-qualified firms that the city had already on a list, and all three of those have refused. And then also, at the July meeting, the council took public comment and discussed with staff more details of the situation, which covered the age of the technical reports, we've already talked about that, and the refusal of the previous EIR firm to take full liability if a new company took over their work. I mean, let's remember that, too. The questions about the ability for a new company to step in and do it, would they then take full liability if they use any of the previous work? Will they then take full legal liability for the work going forward? What I see in the contract with DUDAC is a $2 million insurance policy for professional services, and that wouldn't cover much given the complexity of this and maybe some of the issues that could arise. And also, were discussed in July, the idea that this will be built behind our levy on a location that FEMA called, in quotes, "the highest repetitive flood loss location in California." I mean, that's on the city's grant application, so we agreed with that. And also the concerns that no one from the city is here from the original project. There's no city manager, no original staff, no engineers, no planners, and no city council members. And so, I'm looking at my time here. So as a result of these issues, the verbiage to go forward was consideration by the council and direction to staff about what we want in the EIR, whether it should be an upgrade or a clean one, and agreed there'd be an agenda item and substantial information would be brought back. So the question is, with no discussion here tonight, does the council know what's in the EIR? Who will take full responsibility for the liability? How will the closure of Los Alcubis and the density bonus be included in this EIR? Is there an inundation study in the event of a levy failure? Think Oroville. And so if we could just kind of discuss that and where those things will be placed. Sorry for the extension.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Yes, I agree. Wendell Laidley, 706 Hunt Avenue, I agree this is a more important or more appropriate time to express my opinion. Thank you. Thank you. I, I sent an email to all of you at literally 5:30 this afternoon, and it contains a number of documents or graphics, and all I'd just like to do is read the argument of it, if I may. I said I was here to object to the very consideration of a new EIR for developer Hunter's application. Mr. Hunter and his associates have previously made outrageous claims of rights as documented in the staff report shown below as item number 20 from the city staff report of September Unfortunately, that document mysteriously disappeared from the city's website soon after September 13th, 2011 meeting, and did not, did not exist according to city staff. Even former city manager Gary Broad expressly denied the existence of the letter and the claims. And below that, I offer a legal opinion from a respected Santa Helena land use attorney, written nine days after that city council hearing, and it explains why the developer's claims are incorrect. I can provide the whole data, whole information for anyone who wants the whole detail. After the levy was built, UC Davis professor Nicholas Pinter inspected and excoriated the project in a Field of Dreams report, which, and to which he told me on that tour, that it was the worst, the worst abuse of a levy design that he'd ever seen. So I think it's time now to stop pussyfooting around the issue and put the burden of proof on the developer to justify his attorney's grandiose claims made in the correspondence that city staff has denied existed. Santa Helena residents, excuse me, deserve the consideration of a decent legal argument supporting developer Hunter's claims, this time in full sunlight and accessible to city residents. And you, what I finished off was asking you to take this off the consent, and that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Thank you.
All right, let me, let me ask Mr. Gradage to come to, come forward. Here, here's the question that puzzles me, and that is, as the city planner said, there are boxes of documents that you will need to go through. I, I don't perceive how at this point you really could be in a position to say what previously has been done that, that could be part of the current baseline. I understand the city planner's point that with respect to analysis and so on, that that at the end, end of the day would all be your work product. But my question is, how could, how, based upon where you are today, can you have the comfort level that you can come up with a EIR that would, that would, that would not be contested by the community? It's going to be contested by the community. I don't mean to say it that way, but, but it's, I'm struggling to say it, but in a way that, that it should be thorough and perceived as thorough, and, and if it is contested, hopefully would survive any contest, without having first really engaged in a, in a thorough review of what has gone in the past. And does it make sense at this point in time for your firm to be hired, to go through what we have, and then come back with a really detailed listing with comment of what we have, what you can use, what you can't use, and then schedule a public hearing with respect to that and get community input so that we get off on a strong platform as you move on and do the tough work that this EIR is going to involve? That's perhaps a long-winded question, but there we are.
That's okay. Excuse me. And I'm happy to try and answer those questions. In terms of the timing of when this occurs, that's obviously driven by external factors beyond our control in terms of when it's, it's timely to complete this process, and I make no, no claims of, you know, understanding any claims made by the applicant with, with regards to the, the timeframe or, or, you know, why prior documents were withdrawn. Our approach, as, as mentioned, is basically to restart the process with the notice of preparation, which is a public process and includes a public meeting that is the scoping process, what should be included in there. And I expect that there would be comments on not only the issues, but how those issues were, were handled in the past and, and how people involved with the process felt about how those were handled. That's one of the very early stages. In addition to reviewing the other materials, in terms of the other materials, there may be planning items or correspondence that honestly is, is neither here nor there for our purposes. We are only interested in what the applicant has actually submitted as part of their application. So sort of the, the dream list of what the project may or may not be as an analyst, we are not interested in. It's what's written on the application, what's enforceable through maps, what's enforceable through conditions of approval. That's what we would look at in terms of what we're analyzing. In terms of the baseline, the notice of preparation, as you mentioned, would reset the baseline. We are proposing to do new traffic work. We would scope that with the city and with Caltrans because you cannot avoid the state highway system in terms of scoping your work. And then we would redo all of the studies that flow from traffic, which would be air quality, greenhouse gases, energy, noise. Some of the other, what I'll call site-specific studies, we have proposed to peer review and then make an evaluation. I don't want to imply that we will take things as is. I think Noah gave a good example. Soils reports, if nothing has occurred on site, generally are valid. The cultural resources report, depending on the age, and we have excellent staff that will peer review that. will peer review that. Some of these, we may be able to further peer review with, for example, just updating the records requests. Biology comes to mind. We're going to look at what was done for biological resources, but we are going to redo both the California and the federal species lists, and we're going to site-proof that study with our own staff, and we'll be doing that with several of the reports. And if we find them lacking, then we will make a recommendation to staff on the risks of proceeding with those studies and our recommendation if they should be revised or abandoned. Water is, of course, an extremely tricky one. We will obviously be looking at that one very carefully. We did not propose in our scope of work initially to start from scratch on water, because just in reviewing the materials and what was provided in the RFP, we felt that there may be reports there that are valid. And your assumption is correct. Somebody has to go through this stuff and look at it, and we did as much as we could within the confines of writing a proposal. And once, you know, we're under contract and can actually put our full effort into it, we imagine we'll find different things. Hopefully, you know, they balance out, you know, the usable things we find and the things that need fixing, which is also why we have a contingency in our scope of work. Did that get close to answering those questions?
No. Here's my -- as I'm thinking through your answer, it seems to me that before we get to the NOP stage, it would be very useful to the community for you to have gone through the boxes and say, here's tentatively what we think we can use, here's what we're going to have to redo, to focus the community on those issues at the NOP stage. And then if the community sees there are other issues that you're not tentatively seeking to address at the NOP stage, they can come in and say, hey, you need to consider this or that, and get a real good discussion going in that regard, so that the community and the city are sort of -- have a good, strong understanding of exactly what is going to be covered in the end product and how it's going to be covered. I see this NOP as being very important, but I -- extremely important, but I think the community needs a little help in terms of what you find usable, what you don't find usable, why, in the various areas, before the public is asked to come and comment at the NOP stage. That's what I'm focused on.
And our schedule actually has -- oh, sorry. Go ahead.
And I would say also that it may be that, once you get through this, you're going to see, and I don't prejudge this one way or the other, but it may well be that you're going to take another look and say, hey, given what is required, we really need to expand the scope of work, and there's going to be a contract adjustment. I fully understand that all this could happen. But certainly, at the very beginning, we need to get you the resources to do this initial review. That's kind of my thinking.
Yeah. And if I could add just one more piece to that on our schedule, we've proposed to begin that review and have the majority of it done prior to the NOP going out. If staff and council's direction is that that process should be entirely complete before we go to the NOP, then, of course, we would adjust to that schedule.
Well, certainly, my strong view of it is that it should be entirely complete, and then that gives the public the best chance of evaluating what you propose to do and commenting on it. Well, I've said enough here.
I tend to agree with the mayor's thinking on this, and I also think that even though there may be some biases in some of the information that's been produced, there is a lot of information, the critical criticisms from the community that already exists, that basically say, hey, you didn't cover this, you didn't cover that. From my perspective, that would be useful. Obviously, you know, it's intended for a particular purpose, but it would be useful in terms of just the basic issue spotting. So, I think that work, you know, someone talked about 194-page brief, that should be read, and those kinds of things, because that focuses your attention on the things that may have been missed, without prejudging the other one or this one. I think it's just issue spotting. I come from, you know, a legal background, so that kind of information would be helpful for you. It would be more expensive, of course, but I think you're getting the sense of what the community's concerns are before we even get down that road. So, in that respect, I agree with the mayor.
I agree, too. The nuance that not everything was necessarily going to be looked at before the NOP wasn't clear to me, but I think it makes sense to do it that way. We have such a long history of starting over with EIRs, I think we should start off on the right foot, and I agree.
I agree also. I think if it takes a little bit more time and a little bit more money, as long as we can get community involvement in it, I think it would start out as a better document and end up as a better document, so.
And my thought is, and I agree, I almost look at it like stages, where I think it's important, somebody's going to have to go through this, what happened in the past, to understand that. Somebody will. So, that process is going to happen anyway, and it should happen, to sort of see where things are. To me, it gets to a certain point where then the community needs to participate in the scoping of what will happen. A couple of concerns I have are that, in order to review, once we get to that middle stage, is the community going to have to go hire attorneys to do the review? So, will there be a cost to them to sort of go through it all? I'm a little -- I have a little bit of a concern with that. And then the other thing is making sure that we have some written assurances that meetings will happen. In the past, the community's been told that there would be meetings on projects that did not happen. And so, I would want to make sure that we have this laid out in these sort of stages where, you know, going through what happened in the past, it's presented to the community, and they get to participate in, you know, if, for example, somebody disagrees that a certain section that was carried over from the past is still relevant, there's an opportunity and a way for that to be addressed. It's not just moved forward, because that's where I think, as everybody's saying, we get into trouble and butt heads, and if there's a way to kind of work together so that everybody knows, this is what it looked like in the past, this is where we're going and why, and there's the opportunity to participate in that conversation once you dig in and come back. So, I think we're all saying the same thing. I just want to make sure there's some written assurances in terms of process, so that it's really clear and everybody knows, and doesn't wake up one morning and something's on the agenda when they weren't expecting it. So, that's -- those are sort of where I'm at.
So, the question is, where do we go from here? My thought would be, quite frankly, not to approve this contract tonight, but see whether the city and DUDAC can enter into a contract that gets us through the initial review and to the NOP, and then have them reevaluate what their costs are and come
Staff is hearing loud and clear what the council's interested in with regards to the amount of research and understanding of kind of what the consultant would be basing their assumptions on prior to having the scoping meeting. One concern with the approach that's been kind of identified would be asking a developer to pay for a partial process that would get them nowhere technically with regards to basically moving the process along, which I think is in everyone's interest, and everyone is agreeing that that's their goal. So, one alternative method to do this would be to enter into the contract that's proposed to give DUDAC the funding to begin to do this work, which is included in their scope. It's just the timing, and what I'm hearing is just the timing is shifting, not necessarily the full scope of the work. So, at the end of doing this analysis and going into the scoping meeting process, if there was a concern that whatever that timeline is or that amount of work took to get that research done would affect the budget, we could then voice that to both the developer who's paying for this and the council and the community, to let them understand, this research or this process that was directed by the council may add this much cost or may add this much time, but we could address it while the process is going versus some interim step that would require some negotiation and logistics with the developer, would add time to the process, and would just frankly introduce a little bit more uncertainty into how the process is going to go with a kind of a two-step contract process.
Okay. I mean, that's not unreasonable.
Can we have more public comment, if anybody's interested?
Is there any further public comment? Sure.
And I would just like to add, there's a few questions that weren't answered. So, with regards to Mrs. Navarro's comments, so there's studies with -- or there's questions, there's a lot of information on this project that's out in the public that I don't believe is accurate. So, this question about a density bonus, there's never been any density bonus request filed, there's never been an application for a density bonus or any information proposed regarding a density bonus. It's important to know, the only application that's been filed for the Hunter project is a residential subdivision, a tentative map application. There's never been any design review to construct affordable housing units, there's never been an affordable housing unit agreement proposed. What was proposed and what was analyzed was a tentative map, that's all. So, it's important for folks to understand that, because there's a lot of assumptions, and there's a lot of information that was stated that was never backed up by any applications. And I think that's some of the frustration that the community is feeling, is that there's a lot of questions about what the project really is. At this point, it is purely a tentative map. There's no affordability agreement, there's no design review to construct affordable housing, there's conceptual information in the environmental analysis to allow analysis of what the total unit count would be. There's never been any applications to actually construct anything on the site, purely a subdivision to divide it up into individual parcels. Just folks should understand that. That project application, the tentative map, was deemed complete by prior city staff. If the developer wishes to amend that application to include an affordable housing component or something, that could affect that determination. It's just important to know that, and that could get to some of the issues that folks are asking about with regards to completeness, restarting the analysis, when the project was deemed complete, all of those things. But as of right now, it's a tentative map. That's what the project is proposed, and that's what the analysis of the SEQA document will be.
Okay.
John Milliken. Noah, I talked about this a lot, and I think this is a huge problem. And that's why I'm saying I think the applicant has to redo his application, because it's a subdivision map, you know? What's the impact of that? A few drawings from the architectural firm? No, there's huge impacts from that. There's going to be coverage of area, there's -- I could go down here, just looking at the DUDAC notice of preparation, and I'm not dissing DUDAC here, but, you know, it says things like, "It is our understanding that the EIR will address all issues raised in Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, with the exception of land use planning, mineral resources, population, and housing." I'm going, I can understand mineral resources, but you're not going to even go into those other things? Why not? Water quality. It talks about stormwater runoff and how the ability down there to do it, and biological, there's no fish on the site. The actual last EIR said that. There's no fish on the site. But there's a river, impaired river, right next to it that has danger threatened species, and there's going to be stormwater runoff, there's going to be urban pollution, all those little fish you see on the gutters around here? That's to address the problem of stormwater pollution. That was never addressed in the EIR. And so, there's just a host of things that need to be looked at, and I think going through the old stuff, there's nothing wrong with that, but you should not be making assumptions, not use that as a template for the new EIR at all. You should really start fresh. And I think the place to really start fresh is have a new application by the developer, by the applicant. And that will just kind of clear the boards, we'll know what we're dealing with here, and we'll actually can identify the impacts and proposed mitigations and make it that's something we can live with, that most importantly is just up to SEQA standards, and we get a good, solid SEQA environmental impact report. And that's really all we're asking about. We're not totally against the project, we just want to get the SEQA done properly. And if you start off with the wrong foot, you start off going on the same road you went before, you're going to run into issues. I can tell you that right now. So, I really think we have to take a step back and involve the public more with what has to be identified, and, you know, we've got to get beyond this. It's just a map, don't worry about it. That's just not how it works. And the fact that this was done in 2010, five or six city planners ago, five or six city managers ago, and you're inheriting a lot of bad decisions. This staff is inheriting a lot of bad decisions that were made in the past about this project, and I think you've seen the dangers of that. Bad decisions come back to haunt you, if you look at the flood project. And I think it's only fair to staff, it's only fair to the council, it's only fair to us, that this thing really be started over right now, and we get it going again, but we really start off from scratch. But we could certainly look at the old information. I have no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further additional public comment?
Thank you for opening public comment. Again, it's great to have a little bit of back and forth. So, it's true that there is a very basic map that we're talking about for the EIR, and maybe this is where the confusion comes in. How do you do an EIR on blocks? We don't know how big the houses will be, we don't know how many bedrooms. Are they two-bedroom houses? Are they six-bedroom? Do they have the apartments? There are 25 apartments drawn on a little block, so it's a block. How do you do an EIR on a block? How do you know how many cars will be passing through Pope Street? How many -- how much water will be used by a block? A block signifies 25 units. I don't know how to begin to evaluate that in an EIR process. What's the impact of a block? And, you know, so that would be helpful, to get some clarification on how you do a proper EIR on something that is so basic that it's impossible to describe. I also believe that there was a mention of a density bonus in the past. I don't -- I know you weren't here, I'm not sure if anyone in this room was here. If that's the case, we do need to know that, and if that is the case, it could be up to potentially 40% the way the applicant has configured his housing and configured the affordable versus whatever. 40% is a significantly much bigger impact environmentally in any other way. So, I think it's really important to get a final answer on that, because if so, then we need to take a look at that, too. So, I appreciate the reopening of the questioning and also the amount of concern that the council and staff is showing for the public's input. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any further public comment? I'll close public comment. Let me go back to what Mr. Milliken said. You made the point this is strictly a tentative map, an environmental statement associated with a tentative map. Difficulty is that we don't know how many people, at the end of the day, are going to live within the area of the tentative map. Is there a legal way of going back to the developer and saying, hey, we want you to resubmit your application, and we want to know how many housing units, how many accessory dwelling units, what your plan is for meeting your affordable housing obligation? How many people do you propose living off of Star Avenue Extended, if that's where it is? In order to evaluate that through the EIR process, or are we at the point where we do, where the law says we have to deal with the subdivision only, tentative map, and then when they come back, for example, with their affordable housing component, that's a new project, and yet there's another further EIR associated with that?
So, that's an excellent point to make and excellent points made by the public. When a map is the only application, a lot of assumptions have to be made in order to analyze the potential impacts of that project. But the law says that is a legitimate application that may be filed, and SEQA is run on those legitimate applications. So, while it's frustrating and potentially confusing to try to understand how you could analyze the impacts of just carving up the site currently as it is into 50 analyze the impacts of just carving up the site currently as it is into 52 lots for approximately 80 residential units, which is what the project proposes to do, that's what the law says can be done, and that's the application that was filed as a tentative map. The issue with asking to amend it is that the project was deemed complete by prior staff. So we don't have the ability to say, we're not going to accept your application and move it forward, because we've already said we will. So that, the opportunity to say, we need X, Y, and Z information, has passed us, so we have to move forward with this application, and I would ask the city attorney to chime in to see if there's anything that he would like to add or amend. I would say, a lot of things have been mentioned in the past, such as a density bonus, such as affordable housing. There's a number even identified in the EIR, a 40% affordable housing number. There's never been any mechanisms filed with the city to implement that assumption. All it is, is an assumption that went into the analysis to allow the environmental report to be fleshed out to base the factors on.
There's very little to add to that. Under state law and under local law, once, there are legal consequences to the filing of an application and the response by a city in deeming that application complete. Once that application is deemed complete, the property, the project applicant has a right to a decision on that application. Now, does that mean that you don't do environmental review? Of course not. You do rigorous environmental review on that. As your planning director says, you have to draw the assumptions you can draw based on the development constraints for that property. And that's what the environmental review is based on. But it happens all the time that applicants submit subdivision applications, and they're entitled to do that.
Does their withdrawal of the EIR have any bearing on their standing in it?
Not on that.
Well. It's hard to get any words out here. So the, it does, it seems to me like we are in the position of approving this contract for the moment, but with direction that the environmental consultant do a really good review of what's out there and present a memorandum or a report saying what he can use, what he can't use, and having that available before we get to the NOP stage. And then a good staff explanation as to why it is that the environmental review, based upon a tentative map, goes down this, the specific path that's been discussed here, given the fact that the city in its wisdom declared the application complete in, when was it, 2011?
That's correct.
April?
I don't know the month, it was in 2011.
I don't know what else we can do.
I will, I will just add, the applicant continues to identify the project as an affordable housing project. There are several advantages to them filing the project as an affordable housing project. Staff intends to encourage them to reapply, to use a term borrowed from the public, in order to facilitate that project, if that's really what they are intending to do. So that would affect some of the questions that are being raised by the public here. They don't have to do that because the city's decision to deem it complete. However, it may be a goodwill gesture and provide them some additional benefits down the road should the project be approved. So staff doesn't tend to have that meeting with the applicant to encourage them. If this is really what you're doing, you have not fully made that application, if that's what your intent is.
Okay. I mean, the other, the other side of that coin is that unless and until they perfect an actual affordable housing application, it's not, and there are consequences to them in refusing to do that. In other words, there are quite a few laws under state law that would, would inure to their benefit, were they to properly submit this as an affordable housing development. They have not done that, is my understanding. And so there are consequences to them in sticking to their deemed complete application from 2011.
Is there a way that we can postpone this decision until those conversations happen with the applicant to see if they want to participate in that kind of a?
Absolutely, the council can decide to continue the item, to allow that discussion. However, it was deemed complete in 2011, and I'm sure they're well aware of what applications they filed. So it's, I don't think it's lost on them.
Do we, do we lose anything by continuing it and trying to engage in a discussion that may find some common ground?
I don't want to put, I mean, the applicant intended to be here. He indicated to me in a phone call today he had a family emergency and wasn't able to be here, or his representative. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but this has been a long process, and while I know, in my perspective, it is not the city's fault that we're here eight years later. The applicant has their own perspective on how the process was managed and how much of their money has been wasted, frankly, from their perspective, and time. So this may be seen as a gesture of goodwill and interest on the city's part in actually moving forward with something that they filed an application to do, and we have a legal responsibility to move forward on. And again, it's their choice as to whether they want to do it or not, and this contract being approved or denied doesn't affect that, or approved or continued, it doesn't affect that choice from any legal criteria.
So at no point during the EIR process do they have to identify what the buildings are going to be?
The EIR will assume, and we have a conceptual plan, the EIR will assume a single-family home on a majority of those single-family lots. I think it includes 11 accessory dwelling units or granny units on those, on a portion of those 50 single-family lots. And it includes a combination of duplex and triplex buildings on the larger multifamily parcel. It was originally identified as a conceptual one building with about 25 units in it. They then amended that conceptual plan to show a variety of duplex and triplex units on a larger parcel as their affordable housing, a majority of their affordable housing components.
Well, I think where I am is that we should approve the contract, but with the direction that we've given staff, such that the NOP process is really a good process, working with the community. And then, at that point, if the consultant comes back and says, we need more time, we need more budget, I'm going to be at least quite sympathetic to the consultant's plea in that regard. Obviously has to be well-grounded and justified. But at the end of the day, the consultant works for the city and is built through, as I understand it, to the developer. And at some point, I'm hopeful that we can satisfy ourselves that the consultant has the budget and time to be thorough within the allowable limits of the law. And my concern, as I previously expressed, is that I don't see how the consultant could be there today without having gone through and taken a close look at not just the EIR documents, but the litigation demands and the, deal with environmental issues, and the public comments, which were extensive. And my sense of it is that many of those public comments are going to be directed against the new EIR unless they're dealt with through the EIR process, which could be very much helped by a very good NOP process. That's fundamentally where I am.
Yes, I would agree with that, and I think with the recommendations from the council that we should be able to move forward.
Well, my thought is, I would, I would like to see some, some continued attempt to get some assurances of affordability. If there's some incentives for them to, to, to commit to some affordability aspect, I would like to see that discussion happen before we move forward.
I thought we were just told there was no incentive for them to do that.
You can ask. I can tell you that the city has zero leverage in that conversation. It's, the applicant has had these conversations with staff, is my understanding, over time. They understand that staff perceives this as an application that does not include an actual affordable component, and the city has no leverage in that conversation in terms of requiring them to do that at this point. So it would be a conversation, certainly, that your manager and your, and your planning director could have with them on an ongoing basis to try and encourage or incentivize, you know, flushing out of some affordable component to this project. But at this point, they're entitled to proceed with their map application in its current configuration. That includes an entitlement to have it reviewed environmentally, which is what this contract is for. In other words, the city has a, an obligation under the law to process this, process their application and review it under SEQA. And I can't say that delaying this two weeks or a month would run afoul of that, but I know that, that eventually you will have to approve a contract to process the environmental review for the application that you actually have in front of you. I don't know if that's helpful.
Well, I guess I misunderstood. I thought that you had said that there was some sort of state laws or something that might incentivize them in some way to do some affordability component.
They're well aware of what the, there's a whole body of law that creates, that creates rules with respect to the processing of both this application and also applications that actually do include actual affordable, affordable housing components. But we can't force them to avail themselves of those or to change their application to subject themselves to those other bodies of law.
Can I just ask one more point of clarification? When you're looking at the map and you're trying to determine, to analyze that how many dwelling units or whatever, for instance, you just said so many single-family homes and 11 granny units. In this day and age, now that we have changed our ADU regulations, wouldn't that analysis change to assume that every lot could have a home and also an ADU? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be the norm, so that you're not erring on the side of being too conservative? If you're entitled to do it?
That's an excellent point, and yes, I would imagine any new single-family home subdivision would include a assumption of a certain number of granny units, absolutely, because the state laws changed to make that as a by right land use. This application specifically identifies 11 ADU units to meet the density requirements. So in St. Helena, ADUs count towards your minimum density, but not your maximum, and so this application actually is below the minimum density required for the site unless they did build eight, or I'm sorry, 11 ADUs. So they actually would be conditionally required that a minimum of 11 of those single-family parcels include accessory units.
But if in fact all of them could, I mean, for purposes of evaluating traffic and everything, wouldn't it make more sense to, I mean, are we held to their minimum, or do we go with what the entitlement would allow them?
No, so the SEQA analysis absolutely needs to assume some number larger than that, and I don't know what that number would be, but absolutely.
All right, any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the contract with the direction that I previously spelled out?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Dory?
No.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. That takes us to new business. Yep. The first item is 9.1, California Municipal Financial Health Diagnostic Informational Report. Ms. Metz?
Mayor, I'm going to make some introductory remarks related to this item. As you may know, there's an item on your city manager's work plan that you, that I will be reviewed upon, and that includes a review of the city's, a completion of a document, this particular document, the California Municipal Financial Health Diagnostic. And just a couple of comments on why a document like this is important to cities. And in the development and the consideration of developing this tool, the person that put this together, Michael Coleman, who's the principal fiscal advisor to the League of California Cities, as well as the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, for several years, particularly after the deep recession, was asked, how do, by mayors, by council members, by members of the community, by city managers, et cetera, how do we evaluate the financial health of our city? And how does it contrast with other communities? And so with the help of some very prominent local government finance officers, finance directors, this tool was put together to help answer that question, and it's intended to be essentially a report card on the city's, a city's financial health, and to be readable and understandable to the community. So with that, I'll allow our finance director to introduce our guest tonight.
Thank you. Tonight, Mark, oh, I was going to say Mark Presswitz, he is obviously here, Mark Walsh is here with us tonight. Mark Walsh is a CPA that the city has had an ongoing contract with for the past three years, ever since I started. And Mark has many, has many, many years of municipal finance experience. He's worked with Marin County with finance as well as IT. He's also a consultant for several other cities and counties in the area, has worked with Sonoma County for many years. So he was the person we called on to help us with this financial health diagnostic. We did the diagnostic just on the general fund, so everyone's kind of aware of that. And what I'm going to have Mark do, is Mark's going to come up and talk about what this tool says, how we can use this tool, where we got the numbers for this tool. There are several years that you'll see throughout the diagnostic. 15, 16 are our audited numbers. If you look at 16, 17, those are our numbers as closely as we can say is completely audited. The books have been closed, there isn't anything else that's going to change on those numbers. 17, 18 numbers are taken on this fiscal year, current adopted budget. And then 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21 are all on projections that we've made based on past performance within our audited financials. So on that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark. We are going to have the presentation on the screen in back of you, and we will try to blow it up where we can, so you can see the areas a little more specific.
Mayor Galbraith and members of the city council, I'm Mark Walsh, a CPA and a financial analyst from Santa Rosa. And it was my pleasure to assist staff in completing this diagnostic. I follow probably 20 cities in Northern California for Breone Economics as a financial analyst for them. We use a variety of tools and metrics, and they're so dry and esoteric that it's hard for the public to understand. So I very much appreciate your city manager, Mark Presswitz, introducing me to this tool. And at first I went through it and go, well, I kind of like to do my own tools, but this one's really good. And what it is, it identifies the conversations about your finance that the community needs to have, and it walks through in the order of peril what we look at. So do you have money right now to pay your bills? Will you get through this year's budgets? Will you get through the coming year's budgets? And so obviously, if you don't have cash, that's the worst one. And you're not going to worry, you don't have worries there. to worry, you don't have worries there, as we'll go through the diagnostics, you'll see. The next is, can you make this year's budget work? And the answer is yes. The one after that is, are you going to make the next few budgets work? And the answer then, two, is also yes. And then finally, it looks at service level solvency. So this just wasn't a bean counter exercise. It was city managers' inputs with some financial professionals that put this together, and I've been involved in a lot of organizations. This one is very responsive to the needs. They pick up the phone, they answered my phone calls about how to use this tool, and I really do want to express my thanks to them. So great job, and thank you for letting me present this. Asking a bean counter to present financial information is like getting a yellow lab to fetch a tennis ball. I'd just go right at it. So with that, we'll get into what they're measuring here. It's going to be cash solvency, budgetary solvency, long run, like we talked about, and then service level solvency. St. Helena, one of the few cities that I follow that would get almost all greens, is very healthy, where you have some of the cautions. Some of those grades are cautioned just because of some of the short-term conditions that you're working your way out of. If we come back two, three, four years from now, they would probably be all greens. This is not a financial report, it's not a budget request, but it's a diagnostic that you can look at periodically to see, where am I now? One of the concerns is, one of the concerns of the exercise, not a disconcerting answer to the diagnostic, is how much discretion does the council hold? And so we'll go through that, and I think you'll find that you're healthier than most. What that means in the general fund, and that's why we use the general fund, the general bucket is where your most discretionary revenues appear. All the other funds, and I call them buckets, all the other buckets, your capital projects bucket, your debt service, your special revenue, they all have certain constraints to them. And that's why most of the revenues come into the general fund. If there's excess over expenditures, the policymakers decide what happens with that money. Sometimes you put it in a capital projects fund to recapitalize your infrastructure. Sometimes you add that money to a special revenue fund that's primarily from the state to help shape a program to your community standards, and other times you may subsidize a fund with that. So what this tool does is it also gets into measuring how much discretion you have and how you use that discretion. So with that, we'll walk through 14 indicators of health, and then we'll walk through the 14 measures. We'll briefly talk about policies, and then at the end, I'll kick it back to April, and she'll discuss the policy work that she's doing, which is much more extensive than what the diagnostic itself provides for. So your staff is ahead of the game on what they're looking at. I just want to point that out. So we'll start first, is this working? Am I too loud, too fast, too slow? Okay. Start first with the net operating deficit or surplus. There is no problems there. You're doing absolutely fine in that regard. We'll look at that measure later, but it's just saying that your general revenues over expenditures are not an issue for this city. You want to be thankful to the citizens for responding to their needs and passing Measure D, I believe it is, the special sales tax. You're green, in part at least, for that. Then with the fund balance, your reserves are sufficient over multiple years, and we'll look at those numbers as well. Your capital asset condition, I put a caution on that. Be it yellow or red, I really don't know. I'm looking through the financials, looking for expenditures on capital items to redo your plan. I didn't find enough expenditures, and so that was somewhat disconcerting. The yellow mark could have been red, we'll get into that a little bit later, but for the SHAPE Committee. So you have a SHAPE Committee, they're actively working on that, and you'll get better information into that. So I didn't try to do a huge deep dive and burn up a bunch of time doing what a committee is going to do better anyway. And we'll present this diagnostic to the SHAPE Committee tomorrow evening as well. On the liquidity, cash over short, cash and investments, sufficient to cover your bills, it's not even close to being a question. You're healthy. The fixed costs and labor costs, what they're measuring there are items that you can't get away from. If you have debt service that's obligated to be paid out of the general fund, you really can't get away from that. And then they call the labor costs fixed, and that's just because in the short run, your costs are fixed, right? So in the very short run, almost all costs are fixed, but the labor costs from year to year, they are relatively fixed, and so they do a measure of that as well, and you're healthy in that regard also. On the general fund subsidies to other funds, that's cautionary, but only because you've had some recent increases in subsidies to other funds. And the reason it's yellow instead of red is that the subsidy has decreased or planned to decrease. That's not overly disconcerting to me because it seemed that it was to take care of one or two issues and not plan to be an ongoing item. On the constraints of budgetary discretion, they'll be looking at items such as, are you under a state or federal mandate to do something? When I worked for the county of Sonoma, I started out as an accountant of the sheriff's department. They're under a federal court order to bill a jail. Well, that's a lot of fiscal constraint right there, and it could sack a California county. It almost did for Sonoma. You don't have those types of issues. Binding arbitration was one of the items, we didn't see that either, and so we're fine with that. And then some of the other ones, balancing the budget with temporary funds, you're not actually doing that. And when you look at number eight, some governments do budget some of their fund balance, and that to me is not in itself disconcerting if you look at why. So fund balance is the citizenry paid in a lot of taxes and other resources, and haven't been spent on them yet. So in the days before Proposition 13, what happened is when you got a budget hearing, the room was full, it was almost as exciting as a meeting about water or planning, and what would happen is if the expenditures, all your revenue items, your property tax, sales tax, transitory tax, they're all laid out, property tax is kind of set aside, and then you've got all your expenditures. And the property tax is a solve-for number. Well, the citizens would say, well, you took all that money from us last time, you haven't even spent it yet. And so the governments could use some of that fund balance as a resource. And it doesn't necessarily mean that their budget's not in balance, it's just year after year, if there's accumulation of this, they could spend it to reduce their tax bill. Well, now the question turns to, are you doing the right thing? Are you recapitalizing your assets? Are you providing the level of service you need to? So nowadays, the city, the smarter measures are, what are we getting for what we pay? Sorry if I went off too far on a tangent there. And you're not balancing the budget with borrowing. So you're not borrowing short-term money to take every short-term budget item. You're not deferring employee compensation costs. So if you look at eight, nine, and 10, and you look back into St. Helena's history, you would say, well, what cities were doing that and how much trouble they're in? So I'm not going to start naming cities, but that's the type of environment that begat this exercise. So if you were doing those things, you'd be in a lot, you'd be in a lot of trouble. You're not backloading debt service, and that would be if you just, if I went and debt financed something, and you know, it's 100,000 this year, 100,000 next, and 10 years from now, it bumps up to 500,000. So you're not doing any of those things. The funding operating costs with non-recurring revenues, that's not happening either. So let's say, for instance, if you had a huge, a huge one-time project, and you took in that money and you owed completion of that project, but you spent it in year one, and the project's going to go on four years. We don't see that either. If that did come in, April, I would probably have a conversation about, do we do a deferred revenue? Do we assign fund balance? Do we do some sort of earmark to protect the decision makers? So that would be an appropriate conversation we would have. The timeliness and accuracy of financial reports is getting better every year, and it's healthy. On the service level solvency issue, there are some things that we will be concerned about. Probably the most obvious to the city council would be your streets, streets, roads, infrastructure. Are your facilities adequate for the public to provide the public service that you want to? And then some volunteer associations provide assets to very important public safety programs like fire. Some volunteer organization also provides a lot of services and support for the library, and your citizenry is used to a level of service in the library that's quite high. So that was, might be some of the issues that you would look at resolving in the future. I don't think I missed anything on service level then? Okay. And now, oh, we'll take a quick look at the financial management policies. So on the use of temporary funds, that's not, it's not an issue for you in budget to budget because you have a budget policy and you do a resolution that includes those. We don't see any problems with there. Reserves and fund balance, you've got your goals, the short-term borrowing, interfund transfers, and payment of employee compensation is done by contract. So none of that's a problem. On items six and seven, I'm not concerned too much because you don't actually do, you know, pay-as-you-go financing is not an issue for you. You're making, your budget to budget, year to year, you're fine. The debt management affordability policy will be done before you went out to a borrowing, and the recommendation anyway, rather than size how much debt capacity you have, would be to hire a financial advisor to help you size that if you did go to debt finance. And so that's not disconcerting to me either. On your long-range financial planning, you were doing it, you have done it, you've taken a long-term look, and you've taken action because of it. And what you'll see is that that will be kicked off every few years as a natural consequence of people wanting to review, where are we now? What do we want to be? So on the policy issues, you're doing quite well, and your finance director has a very much more extensive list than that, and so she'll go over that at the end of this presentation. Now we get into the fun stuff for the accountants. Sorry about that. But so April, if we're on 1A then, what we're looking at, that's just the annual, that's the annual revenues in your general fund over expenditures divided by, what's the denominator there? Divided by those same revenues. And so you'll see it was 11.32 in 15, 16, that's been audited. 16, 17, that's also a real number, it's 14%. 17, 18 is what your planned budget is, and then it goes on, 18, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21. That's very strong all the way along. That little, those little numbers between it, where it shows, you know, 28%, minus 22, don't worry about those, that's just a percentage change in the percentages from above. It's superfluous, I wouldn't worry about that at all. And the big difference between Measure 1A and 1B is that 1B includes your operating transfers. So it would take out temporary revenues, and we didn't see any in your 15, 16 audit financial statements. So we assumed none in this exercise. I think there might be $85,000 from one payer in 17, 18. But that's why the numbers are almost the same, except for, we also pulled out the operating transfers. So when we look at 1B, you've got a surplus in 15, 16, you had almost no operating transfers, that's almost the same as 1A. And then 16, 17, you had an 8% surplus, and that's even after operating transfers. So you added a fund balance. This year's budget, you're about breaking even on fund balance after your operating transfers. And then 18, 19, the projection is it would be 2%, negative 2%, and then 19, 20, 20, 21, it kicks up again. That's okay, that's healthy, those amounts are planned. And I don't know that by the time we get to 18, 19, that it will be an actual deficit. That's still looking pretty far ahead. And then by the time you get to 17, 18, by the time we get to the end of the year, you'd have got your mid-year report and your third quarter report. And those reports, what you'll see is we'll have better information on revenues and a better track on the expenditures. And so by the time you get to the end of the year, you may actually be doing better. But I think that's healthy, and you're going to be green on there. Then we looked at one-
Mr. Walsh, just for a point of clarification and to dive a bit deeper on the 17, 18 numbers and the 18, 19 numbers, what that number, if the drop in the number here really reflects the one-time use of funds to address the dam removal. And so what you see is the $800,000, and you don't see the 800, but the impact of that removal is shown here in 17, 18, 18, 19. Then it goes away, but we still have one year of-
Two years of SRF.
-two years of SRF loan repayment to the state, and then the balance climbs up again. And so these are one-time things that are reflected in these numbers here.
And also, just for a point of where this document also ties to the budget documents, for the fiscal year 17, 18 adopted budget, in the front of the budget document, probably about page, I'd say 25-ish, 30-ish, it talks about a list of scheduled transfers, and so any of the transfers within that list of scheduled transfers, that's what, that's where you can find the specifics on that.
Thank you very much. It's absolutely accurate, and I appreciate that. When we get to 1C, I believe the results are the same. What that exercise would show, though, if we look at the formula underneath there, is are there unbudgeted current liabilities? And what that would mean, when we look at the definition, that would be if you're not making the actual pension contributions that you're supposed to make for Calpers, or if you're actively not doing some things like maintaining cars. That doesn't mean that you're recapitalizing your equipment as you might want to, to make the facilities how you would want them, but you're not, you're not failing to make your payments just so you can pay employees and pay other things. So that's what, that's what that means. It does not mean that we're still not concerned that there could be a spike in pension contribution requirements from Calpers. And so one of the, one of the things we would normally recommend for a city is to have and actually do a city-specific analysis of your forward pension contribution requirements, and that would just make you safer as far as your expenditure projections going forward.
And if I might interject?
Please do.
So on this page, where you will see under 1C on the right-hand side, where it has the green dot that's marked, basically this green score, if you see a green or a yellow, luckily we did not have any reds, that is what corresponds with the first initial page on the checklist. And then what actually gives it the green, the red, or the yellow score, you'll see it right next to it. So a good, good is green, it's not an issue of concern. Yellow caution, basically that's what would trigger the yellow, and then the red, that's what would trigger the red. So that way you can correlate what's on this page, what's on that final checklist.
Thank you. And I'm not projecting that Calpers is going to come out with a big pension spike, but the last few years, what we have experienced is they've changed their policy for if there's an unfunded liability, how quickly they take it in, or if there's a loss in the market, how quickly they take that in. And so that was disconcerting to finance directors and city managers. Four or five years ago, it was ringing alarm bells, and some people, to make themselves feel safer, just said, I want a city-specific analysis of how that might impact our budgets. Now we get to fund balance, and that's the good stuff, the leftovers from the prior years in the current year. In a general fund, the things that are counted are things that are going to be cash or soon to be cash. So when you look at a balance sheet, it's just cash receivables, less short-term payables get you your fund balance. Then you'll see there's categories of fund balance. So we peel off the unspendable stuff, which essentially means you already converted to something, not cash. Could be prepaid insurance, could be inventory, something like that. So if it's not spendable, we don't count it for this analysis. On the restricted, unrestricted fund balance, you have some restrictions, but very little, I actually forget what they are at the top of my head, but it's not necessarily an issue for you. You have strong, strong fund balance all the way along. So when I look at the numbers, in 15, 16, you had 34% of year's worth of net operating expenditures at the end of the year. In 16, 17, it was 40%. 17, 18, it's going to be 34, it's the projection in the current budget. And then we projected going forward, 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21. It's worth pointing out that in the assumptions for 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21 of revenues over expenditures and the operating transfers, the assumption is that your revenues and expenditures will grow at 5% a year. The reason for that is, I didn't want to project revenue growth at 7%, it just seemed too aggressive for me. When I looked back to back five years, I saw 7.02% revenue growth- When I looked back to back five years, I saw 7.02% revenue growth and 6.9 something expenditure growth. And I thought, well, there's symmetry in this. So we have a known year that's audited, we have a year that closed books, the audit's just about done. And then we have a budget year, and I'm going to project out 5% with symmetry. There's a lot of the exercises, if I wanted to, to just project, say, 10 years, and anytime you project expenditures over revenues, you get this kind of running alligator. Because what happens, the policymakers are too smart to spend themselves to nothing. And so we get these projections that just runs along and they call it the, the running alligator with the, with the bad stuff on the top. I don't do that. I, I look at what I think is really going to happen and without the policy calls on the budget and the budget being done, I think this is really a more appropriate, uh, appropriate way to look at it. And this exercise provides for that. It's going back just a few years and it's going forward just a few years, it's very realistic. So 20-year projection where either expenditures are over revenues or revenues are over expenditures, I just don't do those, so. Uh, so I appreciate that, this, this form. So now here's where the money talk gets, gets a little real. Um, it gets more serious. On the capital asset condition, the SHAPE Committee is going to be important. And it, it was hard to determine what is the value of these assets, how are they being recapitalized? What rate are they being recapitalized? Because the accounting forms and documents are always based on historical cost. This is stuff you bought a long time ago. What's it worth to you now? What's your plan to recapitalize it? We really don't know. And we can't figure that out just from the accounting, accounting side itself. What we did to fill out the form was, I took the depreciation that you're charging now on all the assets that you use for your governmental facilities. Um, so this would exclude the water and wastewater and almost include all, all other assets. And I assumed that current level of depreciation would deteriorate the assets all along throughout the whole exercise. And I added back probably 45,000 to 50,000 a year in the capital expenditures that I saw coming out of the general fund. Um, and that's what we got, those numbers. The reason why it's not red is you're actively looking into it, you're actively doing something about it. And at least you're going to have an assessment from it. So this answer's not as important as whatever comes out of the SHAPE Committee. Um, it's almost like a filler, but I am saying that just looking at the financials, I know it must be deteriorating. I just don't know how fast and how bad. So, um, anyway, that's, that's the best I could do on capital assets. On liquidity, you have cash, fund balance is almost always cash. Um, so that number's pretty easy to explain. And cash divided by your current bills, it, you've, you've got more than you need to cover the bills. That's, it's not an issue for, for Santa Elena. If we go to five, please. On the fixed costs, what we're looking at there is, on 5A, we're looking at the costs that you have to do, and essentially it's debt service. And then on 5B, we're saying, add, add the salaries and benefits to that, that you can't change in the, in the very short run. We'll call those fixed. And this is sort of a measure discretion. So how much does the council really have to decide over during budget by category? So if the debt's already out there, you've hired the staff in the very short run, that just says, how hard would your decisions be if you had to change those things? For Santa Elena, you're actually very healthy, you do have some wiggle room in there. We talked about the Calpers, um, study that, that may help you. 80% will put you in the red, you're far away from that. And so I, I believe you're fairly healthy with that. And so there should be plenty discretion when you look at, what do we want to do to shape our service level or, or look at facilities in the future? Now we get to the next item. Um, the subsidy to other funds, that's yellow, but just because the box says, "Has increased but is projected to stabilize or decline." And so that's where, you know, the, the numbers beget the colors and the answers and the radio buttons. But if you look at it, there's always something going into other funds. And I believe a lot of it was the SRF water payment, is that correct, April?
There was two items for fiscal year 1718 and 1819, it's a $800,000 transfer for Upper York Creek-
Okay.
-dam removal. And then for 1819 and 1920, additionally, there's a $526,000, $526,000 for the SRF loan final payments approximately.
And then it goes away in 2021?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, and that's where you'll see, what will happen is, you've got your revenues over expenditures, and then what do you do with it? You've been transferring it out for some other purposes from the general fund. That's not in itself, uh, neither good nor bad. It's, what, what you're going to see is when that starts decreasing, then you'll have some, some more policy decisions in the future, once you decide on what's our, our minimum level or comfortable level of fund balance. You may have some policy items to, to look at in the future, how do you want to shape your services? Um, constraints on budgetary discretion, I don't see that as an issue. We already spoke about that, you're not necessarily pinned down by, um, by arbitration or pledges of support from general fund money. Obviously you're fairly healthy there as well. Oh, these are the easy, you don't balance your budget with temporary funds. Um, you balance, you don't balance a budget with borrowing. And you're not balancing the budget by deferring employee compensation costs. Well, that starts happening, people start, you know, polishing up their resumes, in fact, figuring out where their next job's going to be because you don't have money. And so you, you actually do have a good level of finance, you've got a good handle on it. The citizenry has been, has been generous in support of, of the sales tax measures. And now you're looking at studying your capital asset conditions. Um, you're far ahead of the cities that would be concerned with eight, nine and 10. Again, you're not using back loaded debt service. Um, and I didn't see a policy on that. Um, but it, it, you, you're not even close to doing it. So I'm not disconcerted, that's not disconcerting at all. The, um, non-recurring revenues, you're not using that as a funding source either. And the timeliness with financial reporting is not an issue for you. And again, we're left with the service level conversation. And it's how certain, you know, how certain you are with the mix of, of extra help in the, for recruitment and retention and your important public safety program that would be fire your streets. The library relies on donations from an association, I believe, and-
A couple, a few different nonprofit foundations and also endowments.
Yeah, so there's some, some generous nonprofits that are helping fund some essential services or keep your service level high. And then your capital facilities are being studied. So that's, that's the, the indicators in the checklist. This data gathering worksheet can be, uh, dry as dirt in a drought, but what, I just wanted to point out what we're doing here. Sorry, it's, it's Chris, this is all that is. But, uh, so looking at 1516, what we did is we just put in the numbers straight from the financial system itself, straight from the audit report, and we put in the, the financial numbers. And these all roll up into those answers and the metrics that we provided. And, and again, I want to thank Mr. Coleman from California Finance, CaliforniaCityFinance.com for picking up the phone. He actually sent me the Excel document so I could use this to roll up rather than having to recreate my worksheet to try to wrestle with a PDF document. So, um, with that, I think April was going to go through a list of the policies that she's currently working on.
Thank you, now you can see why I like working with Mark. He makes, he makes finance fun. Uh, so the last two pages in the, in the council document that you received, it was actually listed as pages six and, or six, seven and eight, I think it was, or I believe it was six, seven and eight. And so what I did is I just put it at the bottom of these, this presentation so we can keep the flow of the other diagnostic. Uh, but there have been a lot of questions recently regarding what current policies we have, what standard operating procedures, where staff is at with everything. So what I tried to do is come up with this, a summary sheet. So you'll see on the left-hand column is a policy number, so that's something if we have actually assigned a policy to it. P means policy, you'll see later, a little further down, there's SOP, which is standard operating procedures. Policy will go to city council, standard operating procedures is an internal document. The next line, you'll see the policy title. The next area, I added source documents. So there's some items that maybe this original source came from city council, wanted us to look into that, a certain type of policy and adopt it. If you see NA, it isn't anything that was directed by somebody else, it was something that was probably just reoccurring year over year. The next line, you'll see VLF and NIGRO and NIGRO. So VLF is who is conducting our annual audit right now. So we have, we have contracted with them, we have a three-year contract. So if it says VLF, it states that they have identified that as a policy or procedure that we need to incorporate. And if it says NIGRO and NIGRO, it's also identified for, by NIGRO and NIGRO who did our forensic audit for us. And so there's some where VLF and NIGRO and NIGRO, they said the exact same things. Other times it's just VLF, other times it's just NIGRO and NIGRO. The next column, this has to do with the policies, it will state the resolution number that, uh, that adopted that policy. The next column is the data that was adopted by council, and then any notes on it. So for instance, uh, the policy number 0004, the capital, capital asset and depreciation policy. We currently do have one in place, however, NIGRO and NIGRO have made, uh, the recommendation that we update the fixed assets funded by federal grants section. So there's certain things that are still on our task list. So here you can see where we've actually received them and we've adopted them. If you go a little further down, when you have the travel conference policy, compliance with debt covenants, records retention, we actually have those in place, however, they were done before we started attaching policy numbers to them. So kind of gives you an idea because we are updating everything. The section at the bottom, I'll get my city clerks help. Uh, we have the policies to complete. So if you go down a little further. So these are policies that, currently they were recommended by VLF or NIGRO and NIGRO. So you can see we have two of them that are in progress. Uh, currently our general fund unrestricted fund balance, we have an informal policy of 25% and we've, we've held to that. We've, we've accounted for that in every budget that we've done. So you can see where certain projects are actually in progress or certain policies. And then the other policies, we haven't had a chance to start on yet, but just so everyone's aware of where we are. And then the next page, we will move over to the current standard operating procedures. So these are what we consider SOP, they don't go to city council, it's just how we run our internal operations. And so how my department and other departments, how we actually, we, we perform certain procedures. So you'll see the staff documents, the effective dates on them. Uh, we've made this past year a lot of headway and a lot of our standard operating procedures. And what is not listed on here because we have not assigned numbers to them, we have actually developed entire manuals on how to do the daily operations for a lot of our systems that we have in place in the finance department. Underneath that, you'll see your standard operating procedures to complete. So you'll see why I've assigned a procedure number. And then we have several draft documents that we just have not completed yet, and then several other ones that we still need to actually complete. And then the very last section that I wanted to add in here was operational changes recommended by the auditors. So VLF, uh, this started the first year that they did their audit with us. What we would do is when they were going through things, they'd noticed procedurally, things probably aren't the best way that, that we could have handled, and handled them in the department. So they made note of that in our annual report and our, um, I believe it's our letters to those charged with governance. I think that's where the official section is. And so certain things we implemented right away when we could. The two are in progress right now is actually our police receipts and then building permit fees and impact fees. The police receipts, uh, is in progress, we've already rolled that out with the library department. We're in the process of rolling that out with the police department and it has to do with us getting them on spring break and be able to enter information. And then the building P, building permit fees and impact fees, that is something that we've been working with Noah's department on, in particular with Sophia, who is doing an amazing job, and so she's helping us keep, keep track of that. So essentially it's a checks and balances. So what that allows us to do is, they process the building permits and application, or they process the building permits, they put the fees in their system, which is called Track-It. And then what happens is before they release the building permits, finance actually, we process the checks, so that way there, there isn't any risk of somebody in the building department going, oh, don't worry about it, don't pay for it, I'll, I'll take it off the list. So we're working on a checks and balances. And we've already done it with two of our funds right now with the building department, where we cross-check and we audit each other, so that's why that particular item is in progress. And myself or Mark Walsh or Mark Presswich, we'd be happy to answer any questions on the diagnostic. Uh, this is a receive and file report. It is a living, breathing document. Um, it was a great tool for us, I know for both Mark and I, we talked about it. One, seeing where, where we're at, are we healthy or are we not? And we really, um, found that our general fund is stabilizing. Uh, the other area, which isn't a, isn't a big surprise to any of us, is asset recapitalization. We have not been, been keeping abreast of that. And then the third item is really is an introduction to, this is a discussion tool. This is for, something for us to talk about internally, to talk to with the city council and with the public. And a great tool also for the SHAPE Committee to see.
Okay, very good. All right, let me, you could take a seat for just a second if you like. Let me see if there's any public comment. All right, uh, no public comment. Is there, uh, any further questions that council wished to direct either to, uh, our Ms. Mitz or to, uh, Mr. Walsh?
I, I have one.
Sure, you can take the stand again.
First of all, thank you, Mark, April and Mark, this is incredible. I think we've, we, this is a great tool for us as a community to understand where we are and, and readable for everybody. Uh, so this was, uh, we really, really thank you, so thank you. One question I had is if, if the reserve fund, if the, from my understanding, the League of California Cities says that healthy is 15 to 20% they recommend, and our policy is 25%. So if we're up at 34, I'm just wondering if, if we get a yellow caution and something else like capital, uh, asset recapitalization, if we were down at a 25% reserve, would that extra, you know, 9% be something that, not that I'm advocating having less of a reserve, but I'm just saying, if that, if that balance was put into asset recapitalization, would that be something that might bring it up from a yellow?
Yes, and, and that's the, the type of conversation that this tool is intended to create. If you have a problem in one area but not in the other, do you want to have, have more balance? Um, and I did want to point out, in the document itself, it does say that there's a, a government finance officers association in the United States and Canada recommended a balance between, you might see like 5% and 15%. More recently on their website, they said two months' worth. But there's a lot that goes into the fund balance policy. You may not want to change it from 25 to 20 just because of, of somebody else's health indicator. And the reason for that is larger, very large governments may have a, may need a smaller fund balance in relation to their expenditures because they, they experience less volatility. So when they look at how much reserves you need, they take into account the size of the government. So smaller governments with a lot of revenue volatility may need a higher fund balance reserve, especially if they're susceptible to a spike in expenditures or a natural disaster or that type of thing. Uh, I'm from Santa Rosa, so, you know, excuse me to point that out, but, but their, the reserves may requirements differ from government to government. And that's what the GFOA now is, is looking at as their best practice. I was on the committee that wrote the original one in, in 2003, and, um, it's evolved ever since. And so their guidance is, look at your government and your government's needs and have a, a broad discussion of that. And I hope I didn't go too far in answering your question, yes.
No, no, no.
But if you think we're way higher than, than what we want as our level, then yes, you would have discretion and say, okay, and so what haven't we done and what do we want to do? Absolutely, yes.
So yeah, so if your, if our policy is 25 and we're above it, um, and we're seeing an area that's in trouble or, or has some questions, that, that funding can help with the balance. Um, that, that's just something that I was, I just wanted to ask about.
And you'll see in some of the best practices, they'll say, if you're gonna, if your fund balance came to you in part at least because of one-time things, like you may have won a, um, a spike in a revenue source or a grant or, or some one-time purpose, that you would use it for just one-time things. So you wouldn't want to take your fund balance and use it for an ongoing issue per se. Um, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of caveats to how you, how you would recommend using fund balance. And I've been an accountant, worked for a lot of city managers, I would, I would never say go for it in front of the city manager because it's, it's going to be their call as how they shape the finances going in the future. Did I get that one there right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, but it's healthy. So when you see the long-term revenues ongoing over long-term expenditures ongoing, then you really have, have the ability to shape things.
Great, thank you very much, thanks for coming.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Of staff. It's receive and file. It's certainly very well done. I appreciate it. But again, I think we have to keep in mind the caveat in the staff report, which is, this does not take into account pers unfunded liabilities, which you mentioned, and doesn't take into account asset recapitalization, where we've fallen gravely short for a very long period of time. And that's why we have the SHAPE committee. So, in any of that, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
We will receive and file.
That takes us to 9.2, which is the Elm Tunnel. Oh, we're going to take a five-minute break, which is a seven-minute break. Okay. Let me reconvene. The city council meeting for December 12. Next up is an informational update on the Elm Tunnel. And Mr. Uribi?
I'd like to introduce, so on November 14, city council adopted the goals that included a request for an informational update on the 2011 Elm Tunnel management plan, as well as having informational consultation at the Salina Beautification Foundation as part of the beautification of the Tunnel of Elms. And so we have our Public Works Maintenance Manager and Certified Tree Arborist Carlos Uribi here, as well as one of the members of the Beautification Foundation, Suzanne Ortega. So without any further ado, I'll let Carlos take the lead.
All right, very good. All right. Good evening, Mayor Galbraith and City Council. Just a quick presentation on our update. So I would like to just briefly talk about three points. First one being, we're continuing soil inoculations, soil injections and inoculations to, again, preserve the existing trees. About 99 is where we're at now. Again, we performed two different periods. We'll do a shepherd, which is your fungicide in the summer, and then we'll do merit in the winter, which is your insecticide. And tagging on with what Caltrans did, again, they removed 10 trees that weren't identified as diseased and a risk. Some of those had hollow cores. You can, from the top, you see a lot of dieback in the canopy and at the, what is that called? The structural points. So after those 10, city is going to be replanting 10 of those trees. They're going to be the frontier variety, along with some of the accolades that we already had in stock. I say in stock, that we've had there for two years. They're 15 gallons. We're going to go through, plant the 10, and four more that were identified as either sick because they had a broken leader, or they were totally dead. Sometimes just the trees don't take. So we'll be doing that. And then subsequent to that, in the summer, we're pending on our weather patterns. We're going to be watering those weekly. Again, Barringer helps us by providing water on their side. So we bring some hoses to attach, and then water anything on that side. And then we do a water truck with our trailer come through and water the east side. And then that, again, weather pending, once a week, could be at the other week. Some say two to three weeks. But again, it's whatever the weather throws at us. And then lastly, ongoing maintenance, a lot of it is preventive, preventative stuff with Caltrans. So we'll continue to have our meetings with them. We try to meet early spring is better. And that coincides with PG&E doing some of their line clearance. So they'll come through, they'll assess any of the structural limbs that can potentially impact their lines, their high-power lines that go through on the Barringer side. They were able to squeeze it in in February. They'll continue to do that. At that time, we'll also meet with Caltrans, go through, identify any trees that are showing decline or that need extra attention, and go through and identify any maintenance that will need to happen in the summer. So if we see more dieback, that's where we'll start paying attention, and then they'll start scheduling it in. And then as far as city responsibility, we'll go through, weed eat, pick up litter if that's constant. I mean, you find some pretty random stuff out there. And spray the rataway to help knock down some of the weeds, maintain the pathway itself, the pavers, and then the wooden railing on the right-hand side. And with that, I'll invite Suzanne, if she wants to say anything from the Beautification Foundation. We did hold a meeting December 6, and we did go over pretty much all of this, along with a little bit more with what they would be helping us with. It'd be good collaboration.
That's good to hear. Yeah, I'm very encouraged, having been a member of the Tree Committee, to hear the positive and the plans according to the tree maintenance program that you all signed off on in 2011, or at least the council did. I don't have much to say tonight, although I waited till the end to say it. I'm glad the city is green and healthy, and I think that will reflect on the Elm Tree Tunnel, too. But as you know, the president of the Foundation, Beautification Foundation, passed away recently. Actually, it was on the night of the last meeting I was at. And so the Beautification members did not meet in order to discuss the subject. So we will reconvene and probably come back and would like to talk with Erica and Carlos again, and have a communication going, because I think the members, and Joyce being one of the most serious member who supported the Elm Tree Tunnel for years and years, and the foundation, they would like to continue doing anything that they can, supporting, helping the city, monitoring, doing anything. So we'd like the communication, and I'm glad Erica and Carlos opened it up for us.
Right.
And then to come to the council, obviously.
Very good.
So, thank you. And we'll see you again.
From the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate that. And I would like to take a minute to thank Joyce. I think I said it in our meeting before. Again, all the proponents she had for the tree and reading some of the history on it, you'll see her name pop up a bunch of times there, back from 2005 or even before that. But also, a lot of the work she did for parks, like I've said it before, and I'll say it again, really strong proponent, both in support and letting you know, and she lived right across Baldwin Park, and letting you know, eh, something's going on over there. So I'd like to really honor her from the bottom of my heart. Because again, when I found out, it floored me. Until this day, it's like really hard to think that she, you don't see her walking around over there, kind of checking on us, like, what are they going, what's going on over there at Baldwin Park?
All right, very good.
Appreciate that.
Any questions? You know, I've got one question. When you drive through the Tunnel of Elms, you've got the impression of significant gaps. Maybe I noticed them more on the eastern side than on the western side, but I think there are large gaps on both sides. You plan to plant how many trees again this year?
This year, 14.
14. How many trees would it take to really fill in all those gaps? Do you have an estimate?
I would have to go, to give you an actual measurement, I have to go. But I want to say that some of those gaps are intentionally made there on both sides, whether it is to, not necessarily to match, because you do have entrance points, even though they aren't used on the Barringer side, you have some of the same sides on the east side. And they're intentional. Whether sometimes there's utilities right next to them, so you kind of want to stay away from those. Because in the long run, one's going to interfere with the other, and you're going to find yourself wanting to remove the tree.
I see.
And just so I can interject, and one of the other things we talked about with the Beautification Foundation last week, and we were very fortunate, we had about eight members come, or board members as well, it was a good turnout, about the opportunities of bringing in experts in to help us, how can we fill in those gaps, or start maybe doing a replacement program, not just the Tunnel of Elms, but alternate species that would co-mingle well, that are less disease resistant. And I think it was a suggestion of one of the members.
How about more disease resistant?
More disease.
Sorry. No disease maybe would be the better term. Sorry, I said that wrong. At least you knew my intention there was, but something that was, doesn't have the same disease, and diversify the tunnel. And whether we get those experts in here, but in the short term, but it was one of the topics of discussion last week.
Yeah, I would like to see that. And perhaps come in at some point with a proposal and a contract, if that's what it takes, so that we have a really good baseline to work from. And in terms of what Mr. Ellsworth proposed earlier, I could see that might be a really good topic for a citizen fundraising drive.
It's already been brought up to me that there are private citizens that want to participate. And so if there was a program identified, and even if it did, I think that initial conversation of getting past, does it just have to be Elms? I think enough people have sort of said, no, you know, we can move on to look at other trees. It might be more sustainable. Or so if, I mean, the sooner, the better, I think, in terms of coming up with a proposal. And if it takes some funding, I mean, people have said that they're ready to participate. So that's out there to, because there's a wanting to have that be as good as it can be. And the other thought was, even if it takes a little bit more to get more mature trees to start out with, I think there's a willingness for that, too. So from public participation, so.
All right. Any further public comment? No?
I have a question. Is there a plan to have ongoing communication between the staff and the Beautification Committee? Or how did you leave things?
I'll let you.
We left it open, because they're, part of the goal is to further the discussion and talk about those experts and what can be done. There's also the opportunity potentially on the lineman of the vine trail, that they're planting trees part of the vine trail. I'm not sure how far south they come along this segment, but I think there's a lot of opportunity. We need to keep that conversation open. Also, that they're not just partial to the Tunnel of Elms, there are also other trees. And the other discussion was about getting the tree ordinance updated. So we have a fallback if we do get committee members who want to sign on, that we have that in the ordinance. So there's a default when there's not enough quorum for a committee, that it falls back to Public Works. And then when there is a quorum, that they can have the committee again. So there's.
Yeah, I think since we disbanded the Tree Committee, and I think we recognized as one of our goals, we should take advantage where we can of people in the community who have the interest and the expertise and the time to help out in particular projects and areas. And I'd say, to the extent they're willing, you know, we should take full advantage of it.
And are you actively seeking an expert now that would be able to come in?
No, I think it's still in its infancy.
Yeah, we just had the conversation last Tuesday. We wanted to bring it. So council direction is to start looking, then I guess that's.
I think that is council direction, to start looking for an arborist to work with the city and with Mr. Uribi, and come up with a real, with a set of suggestions in terms of new plantings and tree types and those things that a professional arborist can really spell out in a report and show us what our alternatives are, and perhaps with some cost components, too. with some cost components, too. Any further comments here? All right. Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, I think you had talked about the communication with the Beautification Committee. I'm more concerned about the communication with the council. From what I heard last time, we may have fallen off a little bit in terms of some of the inoculations and maintenance. I don't know one way or another, but it seems like it would be prudent, maybe there's milestones during the year where you can come and report to us, this is what we did, these are the conditions of the tree. Yes, we did all the inoculations. So that we're not, as policymakers caught off guard, kind of like a couple of years later, go, oh, yeah, we didn't think about that. So that there's sort of a mechanism in place where we go, yep, we did that. You know, we trimmed the trees, we did the inoculations, we held to our obligations under the agreement that we have.
Well, sure. I'll open the public hearing, but you come to the podium, please.
Glenn Smith, 1730 Dean York Lane. I have no expertise in this area at all. But I do see that if you plant big trees under power lines, you end up a few years later with some folks coming through with big chainsaws and just tearing the trees apart. I think you should also think about the possibility of working with the power company to either move the lines, or underground them, or do something. So that if you're going to plant trees the size of elm trees, and that seems to be what people have in mind, that is really the only way to have beautiful trees. Otherwise, you know, plant something that only grows 15 feet tall. But I don't think that exactly meets the definition of your Elm Tunnel. Anyway, that was my thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to follow up. Director House informed me that we do have to be careful because CEQA requirements, that is a historical Elm Tunnel. So that's one of the things we have to keep in mind.
CEQA is always biting you on the heel. All right. Any further discussion? All right. That takes us to item 9.3, review and approval of city council's housing solutions goal and 12-month objectives. Mr. Pestwich?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're revisiting the final, the fifth of five goal, broad three-year organizational goals. And I want to thank Vice Mayor White, Councilmember Cobberstein, and Mary Stevenson with our town, St. Helena, for meeting with me on both November 17, and again on November 27, to take a look, a second look at developing a strong housing goal and a number of strategies. And tonight, just want to point out that we have updated the title of the goal, which I think is an improvement. The goal now reads "Stabilize, Maintain, and Improve Access to Housing." And we've spelled out explicitly a number of steps, 12 different specific objectives that begin early in the new year. A few months later, transitioning to another citizens, citizen stakeholder-based committee to prioritize some recommendations that would come out of a white paper that essentially identifies best practices and ideas. There's also some work early on looking at some immediate opportunities. And so we would anticipate some findings and opportunities described by late February. So that's a very quick timeline. It's very aggressive. And it looks like the city manager has a large role here, so he better get started with some of this. The work continues through September of next year, and finally, by the end of the year in November, a formal work plan and items for council action. So let me pause there, and either myself or the two council members are available to answer any questions related to the thinking that went into this.
Any?
Any questions?
Any-- All I can say is, I think this is a very ambitious timetable. And I'm also, quite frankly, worried about the impact of the President's tax bill on affordable housing. I don't think it's going to make it any easier at all, sadly.
It's the optimistic.
When there's a will, there's a way.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I think we can, I think if we move forward with an eye for opportunity, and just keep focused, we'll get there. So I think this is great. I mean, this is a huge, we start to have a game plan, so it's really great.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the goal is, is to come up with as many options as we can to help facilitate housing in our city. And we'll be working on it aggressively.
Right.
But Mark's name is on the top of each one of those.
Yeah, I would only add, I mean, we made a specific decision to start focusing on revenue and revenue sources that we might be able to tap or earmark. And also to look at regulatory things, things that, keeping in mind that this is a three-year goal, things that we can start to get to work on this year to set things in motion, and maybe try to create some of the revenue streams that would help this effort. So I'm excited about it. I think, I think we can get there.
All right. I don't see any, I think the public's abandoned us, so no public comment.
Carlos can get it.
And any further comment?
We need an approval.
I would just add that I see the methodical process that went through this. It's clear to me that there was a lot of clear thinking going on in terms of how certain things came before others, and you built up along the way. And it's very impressive, even though it's just a simple chart. I read this chart a couple of times. I go, oh, wow, this makes good sense in terms of how it's structured, and how the citizens are brought in at various points. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to this. This is a daunting task, and obviously, you're right. I think I agree with Jeff, by the way, that, you know, we have to be ready for the opportunities. We don't have the money now, obviously. And I always tell people, well, if you want a Mercedes, you got to save for it, you know? And when that new Mercedes comes out, you're ready to buy it. But if you're not ready for the opportunities, then you miss them. So I'm more optimistic that we'll be ready, starting to put away some money to make some of these opportunities happen. But I think we have to have a plan first. I know, you know, some of us disagree on that, but, so I think this is a good structure, and I'm happy to participate, obviously, as a council member, in any other way I can to help this process along.
Maybe you could write the white paper.
All right. So I think the council action is review and approval of city council's housing solutions goal and 12-month objectives. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
And Cobberstein?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. I will adjourn the meeting.